At this time, I'd like to welcome you all for coming. Today, we're having the Smithfield Town Council Committee meeting. And we'll start off with public comments. Anyone have any public comments?
There are no sign-ups.
Pardon?
There are no sign-ups.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to, since we don't have any public comments and it wasn't on the agenda, I would like to have either Amy or Judy come and talk about everyone just received a note card. The Schoolhouse Museum is having a traveling exhibit on the Tuskegee Airmen, and I would like them to speak about it if they would, please. Thank you. Sorry, Judy, didn't need to surprise you. I tend to talk to Amy about it, though, so.
No worries. Thank you.
On Tuesday, June 10th, and Wednesday, June 11th, at the Luder Sports Complex, there's going to be the Tuskegee Airmen Memorial Exhibit. It's like a mobile museum. You know some more details about it?
I don't know a lot of, I've got some details, and it's all on our website. So that's probably the best place to get information is the www.genuine smithfieldva.com website. It's going to be open from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Those two days, and there's going to be a special ceremony that first day. I believe it starts at 10 o'clock.
And I believe there will be slots where you could sign up for your tour because they expect it to be very, very busy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention and make sure that citizens are aware of it, and it's a great, great exhibit that's coming, and I appreciate it. Also, I want to say thank you, I guess it was the museum that brought the VA 250 mobile museum this weekend, too, and that was really fabulous, so.
They were really spectacular, and I just will let you know that we got to spend some time with them this weekend. And of all the places they've visited in Virginia so far, we were their favorite.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you both, appreciate it.
So here are no other public comments, so I'd like to turn the meeting over at this time to public safety. Mr. Bowman?
Good afternoon. Stalling, if you have something?
Mayor, we will need a closed session. We can do it at the beginning or the end, whichever is important.
We can do it at the end, if that's all right with everybody?
That would be fine.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to open the public safety. Members, or myself, Vice Mayor Harris, and Councilwoman Biebermeyer. Today, we have Smithfield Chief of Police, Lonzo Howell. Chief Howell?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You all have our activity report, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have concerning that April activity report.
All is quiet is good. That's good.
That's good. If there are no other questions, I'd like to close the Public Safety Committee meeting and turn the meeting over to the Water and Sewer. Mr. Mayor?
Water and Sewer, Ms. Biebermeyer is going to take that, Mr. Cutler is out of town doing some things we'd all like to do. So anyway, Ms. Biebermeyer?
So I'd like to open the meeting for the Water and Sewer, and we have a document that Mr. Stalling sent us regarding Red Point Tap House. If we can have some discussion on that. Michael, you want to bring us up to speed?
All I really have is in your packet, well, you all received an email that we received from Mr. Derek Joyner from Red Point Tap House, basically asking the town if there was any way we could assist them with the water connection that they have to make. So it's before council for your discussion consideration. They are here this evening as well if you have any questions. Ultimately, it's up to you guys whatever you would like to do with that. And I mean, we haven't done it before, but you guys can do what you want knowing what that means and moving forward. But it's there. We did have the estimate was about $32,000. That would make the connection and bring it under the road and set the meter. It would not go from the meter to their facility. So it was about $32,000 for that work. And then they would have the cost of going beyond that.
So if we, yes, have a couple discussions that...
Okay, where, so they would stub under the road, where would it come up? I mean, are we talking about another 100 yards for them to get to that?
It would, the meter would be set there at the property line.
Okay.
And they may be able to answer more about where their water enters the building, things of that nature, but that was the estimate by our contractors to bring it under the road and set the meter.
Mr. Joyner, Mr. Hess, if you have...
Thank you, guys, once again. And I'd like to first open up with this. Apologies for anything in the past that might have come across as difficult or that led us to this point. So the brief history of Red Point, me and Nick started this off as an idea, and when we went through the process, we did agree to hook up the town water within that two-year span. And not knowing that we didn't have any other option at the time, there wasn't a correct me wrong special use permit at that time, to say that we couldn't do it. And we had an existing well, and the two years was there for us to get on the, you know, get under our, get off the ground and on our feet. And thankful for that. The two years came and gone, and at that time, we're like, you know, the water connection is something that we were looking at doing at the same time that the proposed bike path was supposed to come right in front of our building. And that's one of the reasons why we even chose that spot was for the proposed bike path at the time, that we were told by the previous town manager that was going to happen. And our thinking process was two years, bike path. Bike path comes through, we get the town water done at the same time. It's all one construction. It's all one, under the ground, and basically just be done with it. Obviously, bike path is still proposed down the road further, but the two years come and gone, we said, look, you know, we need more time, and then the bridge closures happened. So it's kind of been a series of events for us. We, as a small business, want to be in compliance. We're not trying to be difficult about this. In the face of the ongoing bridge closures that was not expected at the time of us starting this business, it would be really hard for us to do this right now. The plan that we had come up with to try to kind of somewhat meet in the middle, and if the town could help us out, was if you guys could help bring it across the street. And just like Mr. Stalling said, it would pretty much come right in that grassy area, right where our signage is, and then we'd still have to connect it. The main connection is at the back of our building. It actually comes into the bathroom, if you've ever been there. So the main connection comes into the bathroom and disperses out to the rest of the building. Our parking lot is old South Church Street from decades and decades and decades ago. So we still have quite a task ourselves as small business owners to get that through the parking lot, through the back of the building to connect to the existing main line. Not to mention the town meter, I'm sorry, the tap fee as well as the meter. So we still have a fairly decent financial obligation, without giving an exact estimate, to getting this task done. So ideally, we, we're asking for help from you guys to try to get it to us across the street, and then we still have to do the rest of the stuff that I just mentioned. I can't try not to beat a dead horse, but the bridge closures have had a huge economical impact on our business. We opened up right after COVID, and first two years are better than the, our first two years of business have been better than our last two years of business, and part of that timeframe is the bridge closure. So that's one of the main things that's kind of driving this for us right now, is that, as well as still the financial obligation that we're going to have to have to get it through the rest of our parking lot to the back of our building. So did I miss anything?
And it's also a little tricky, you probably know this. So we, in front of our property is a D for you guys, it's the sewer repair area, the whole front of our property. So that's where your main sewer connects. So getting through that whole little field of, I don't know how bad it is, it's not going to be easy to get through that because your guys' whole repair area is through the front of our property. And that's, that's even we get to the town in order for you guys to come over there and clean that, but you guys come, I don't know, it's probably a quarterly, they go over there and do that. But so that's just another hurdle to get, like, we don't know where, this is kind of an unknown how it's going to get across that, that part. So we, there is a little bit closer, we could, we could go where it comes across the street where they're building that new house because they're going to have to meter the same place. That's exactly where the cutting meter is, that brand new home that's going across the street from us. So it would be that short, that's the shortest part of the road to go underneath, and we could actually pick up the water in that little garden, and that would supply the whole building. So that would be really, if it came across the street, you know, it would be another 20 feet we've got to hook up. And then with that, I mean, with the 32,000, yes, on top of that, we still have, you know, 7,500 for the meter, which we got, obviously, we got to pay for that, and then whatever.
Tap fee.
And the tap fee, so.
And it's still got to go through the parking lot as well.
Correct. So, but that might be the least evasive for us to get there, but it is kind of the fear of unknown when it comes to that. During the beginning stages of this building, we had, you know, Department of Ag and everybody came out, and they were like, they couldn't even drill into any part of that because it, you know, where it used to be in a service station, they wanted to make sure everything was in compliant, but they were like, the ground's so hard. It was, it was a good one. But, but...
Does anybody have any questions for these gentlemen?
I do. Okay. The undertaking, if the town so decides to do this and honor your request, how long, number one, and number two combined, are you in a position to continue that project to make sure that it does connect to your business? And how long after, if the town decides to undertake this, this idea, how long after that would it take for you to accomplish the remaining connection? Because my concern is, this is a little out of the ordinary as we know. I tend to believe that if this was a gas line, an elective line or something like that, I wouldn't even give it a second thought. But it being a water line, which everybody needs water, it reminds me of the old Wild West days where you cut off the water and you can't do this, you can't do that. But my real concern is if we go, if we go out on a limb, we, and as representatives of the taxpayers, I don't want this stub to go to nowhere. I don't, I really, I would really feel a lot better going down the path if we had assurances and guarantees that once it comes up and you have the capability of connecting, I don't want to be here a year later.
I'm just, I would...
I, I just, I mean, I really feel very strongly, obviously, about that. That's, that's at this juncture a concern that I have.
So I would, I personally have spoken to contractors as well, looking at this as far as already future planning, to see what they would say as far as connections, pipe diameters, whether, and thumping it as far as under the street, thumping it through our parking lot to get to where it needs to be. So I've already done some due diligence on that, and I assure you, and I give you my word alone, that if it does come across the street, I mean, 30 to 60-day timeframe should be...
It's weather dependent, I mean, I would say...
Weather and contractor dependent, but I would say 30, 60-day timeframe would probably be an average of how long it should take for somebody, as far as us paying them to get it done. We're not doing it ourselves, we obviously have to have a licensed contractor do it. So, but I've already reached out to someone to look at this for us, so...
Okay. I have one other question, I promise, and that's you. The business has obviously changed hands.
Correct, we are still the property owners.
You're still the property owner.
And this is still our project to finish, no matter what.
And I think we're looking, from a town perspective, from a revenue generation perspective, meals taxes and everything else, to kind of offset the cost of this undertaking should the town decide to do that. Do you have any proximal assurances that the business will remain a business and we're not just simply funding a water line for a piece of property to be sold that will cause us some concern as far as return on our investment?
Red Point won't go anywhere, I promise you that.
So, so they can't, so the, so just to be upfront, so the people that...
And I don't want to get in your business deal.
No, 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 no. I understand, I'm not going to divulge into that, but it, but as far as the people who bought the rights to the business and the business LLC and the name of Red Point, they can never change that. So it will always be Red Point Tap House. And the contract we have in place is for many, many years for them.
I'm sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
There's nothing short term on that.
I got a question, a couple of questions, Mary Ellen. Michael, Derek said that there wasn't an opportunity for SUP originally. Just for clarification for myself, why were they not offered a SUP at that time?
It didn't exist. It wasn't something that existed in our zoning ordinance at that time. One was added after, I don't know how much longer Tammy may be able to answer that, but that was not an option that existed in our zoning ordinance at the time.
So just, thank you. Just to clarify, at one point, the, the town code did allow for an SUP for the connection. That is why the SUP was granted with a two-year timeline for the connection. Once that timeline expired, the town code had changed, where a special use permit was no longer allowed for the waiver of the connection to town water. So there was no vehicle for them to then have that, that well connection.
Let's back up. You say that there was an SUP that was good for two years?
They, the SUP that they received was for two years.
Was that when the, was that when Tap House established?
Went through its rezoning? That is correct.
So there was an SUP opportunity?
At that point in time, correct.
Okay, okay. The other question, Michael.
It was not SUP. It was never, it was never offered to us as an SUP, or else we would have applied for it two years ago. It was...
It was waived for two years.
It was a waiver, we, it was never, like, you look at our SUPs that we paid for, that was never an SUP for us.
Okay, Tammy, what are you saying again?
So it was part of their rezoning and their special use permits that they applied for. It might not have been a specific SUP, but it was part of the conditions that they...
That it was waived for two years?
That it was waived for two years, part of those approvals that they received.
Okay. And Michael, I know that we haven't had definitive site plans yet for the bike path. Is the bike path coming down that side of the road?
Yes, ma'am.
It definitely is. We will vote on this on Tuesday night?
This is for council's directed discussion.
To go, to agree to do this? If we agree to do this, will we vote on that Tuesday night?
If council wants to put something forward for...
Okay.
The council meeting in June, then yes, that would be the first time you would be able to take action on it.
Personally, I feel where we are now with this discussion, I feel this discussion is overdue. We should have had this discussion first before we made our decision. I voted against it when we voted on it in town council meeting, and my vote remains that. I know I've heard conversations among council about setting precedents. I think that this would set a precedence because we've never done it for a business before. I watched extensively when the Tap House came before Planning Commission, and one of the ideas that they tossed around, but it never got to us, Derek mentioned the lack of business or the slow of business, slowdown of business since the Cypress Creek work, and they had no idea that that was going to happen. But one of the things that the Planning Commission discussed was possibly giving them extended time and making this decision after the bridge reopens. That's the only way that I will vote in an affirmative for it. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Sure, thank you. Any others?
Yeah, Michael, just, the bike paths will come in front of or behind?
In front of, it will be between the Tap House and South Church Street. That's where it's currently proposed.
So I have obviously some very definite views on this, and I've been talking about this for probably six months. So I don't think we would have ever gotten to this point of the town spending $30,000, over $30,000, or Red Point spending over $30,000 if we would agree to the SUP. They have water, they've had water there for decades because they're on a well. I don't think it sets any precedent because there aren't any other wells in town. This house was, this business was already on a well. So if it was new construction, that's completely different. Obviously, new construction has to connect to town water. But because this is an existing business that has water, didn't need our water, it is a, it's the epitome of a special use permit. I know there's a lot of woulda, coulda, shoulda in the past, and at this point, I think we just need to look at the reality of it and say, this is a small business that we as a government are making them jump through these hoops for our convenience, not for theirs. I understand that there are rules that the town has to have, and that's important. However, that, this is a special, a special instance, and I think we need to look at this again. They don't need the water. So we're all spending a lot of money for something that no one needs. And I think we need to really go back to that.
Mary Ellen, how would you feel if you were a small business on South Church Street, and your business was in compliance, and you had to pay for water and sewage usage? And yet, right up the street from you, there is a business that's not doing that?
We pay the same.
Yes, please answer that, yes.
I'm sorry, I'm just a couple of things. So back to the special use permit. So the, so the two-year waiver that we did in terms of our conditions to open the business was just that. There was no special use permit at the time to completely waive the connection. It was only a delayed to give us the two years to get on our feet. So if, if that SUP was available at the time of opening the business, we would have applied for it, to not even push it down the road for two years. And it, and it wasn't. We do pay HRSD for sewer. We have metered the water that comes into our building from the well to know how much goes into the sewer to pay HRSD the proper amount as well. So we're not just dumping water down the sewer that we have no idea how much it is. We've also been in compliance from, from day one as far as testing our water. Every month, we've sent it off to Department of Health, and we've had positive results as far as good, clean water every month, and we've done that for four years.
Five, a year, four years, five years.
Yeah, so five years. We did, we tested our water sample every month to be in compliance with Department of Health. So we do meter our water as it comes in, so we know how much goes out, and we pay HRSD the proper stipend for that as well.
Is any portion of that water bill comes to the town?
So we don't make money on the water bills for town, correct?
We do pay.
No, I understand we pay, but we don't make a profit on selling water to our town, correct?
No, the water rate covers operation maintenance.
Correct, so we would not require more water. You know what I mean? You see what I'm saying? Yeah. So we don't make water on them.
Michael, I'm confused about the SUP originally. Did we waive their water connection?
During the rezoning, they had a waiver for two years of making the connection.
So they had to make the connection at the end of those two years?
Right. And I think what's important is, at this point in time, we're not, there isn't an SUP on the table. What we're talking about is their request for financial assistance to make the connection. Council has made the decision that they have to make the connection, and now we're, they have asked if council will help them financially make that connection. That's the only thing that we're discussing because there is not an SUP that's been applied for at this point in time. Council's already made that decision.
Is this a gift, or is this a loan?
They have asked for, for assistance in making the connection. That is a discussion that council has to have. We don't have any mechanism in, you know, in the administrative side of things that allows us to do any of that. It would be what council feels is appropriate and directs us to go do. And what...
Can we revisit that SUP, or is there a way to...
It has been denied. I mean, we can't...
I mean, we can, can we change that? I don't know.
Before we get down that path, if I can add, a couple of things that are concerning there. Number one, wells go dry. Wells do ultimately become disrupted, things like that. That's, that's a, that's a potential, number one. Number two, you don't ever know when the Virginia Department of Health or Department of Environmental Quality are going to come in and say, you know, these aquifers, and they've already talked about it a number of times, they have some concerns about private entities withdrawing water from aquifers. Do y'all have a water withdrawal permit? Do y'all, or y'all...
We don't own the well.
There is, there is one on the well.
Yeah.
There is a water withdrawal permit. Do you know what your, what your maximum gallonage is on that water withdrawal permit?
I'd have to look on it. I don't have that.
Okay. Well, that, that causes me some concern, too, because all it takes is an act of assembly or an administrative rule that says, you know, we use shallow wells, you can do it for irrigation, do this, but there may come a time, I mean, even farmers in the western part of the state have water withdrawal permits that run not out of a well, but out of a, just out of the river, because that water ends up in the aquifer. So to go back and let them continue to use the well when they've asked for a connection to something that we would regulate, something that we would know as far as the quality of water is concerned, I think it's incumbent upon us as a council to ensure, and I have no problem with what they do as far as testing and things like that, but I would much rather prefer that those customers that go in there to consume water have a consistent, health-oriented source of water. That concerns me a little bit.
If, if the stub does go over onto that side of church, all remaining six, seven properties that are on that well have the opportunity to connect to that water line as well?
That would depend on what we ran over there. I mean, in theory, if the town was doing it, we could run something large enough to do that. That would not be their obligation if they were doing it. We have not priced running something larger, but again, in theory, we could run something larger and have it available.
Right.
But that $32,000 price was enough to supply the Tap House.
Okay. Because that was sort of a follow-up to what Steve was saying. The depletion of aquifers is a big deal, and, I mean, land is sinking because of it. HRSD has a great, great little study that they've done that I read several months ago. But in a, in a town like this that was annexed and that little portion, you know, this is not new construction, this is not a new subdivision going in, these are existing folks. I think it's our obligation as a town to be able to provide water. And it just, you know, they're happy with the well, but if, if there was an issue with it, they have no other means to be able to even get it. And I, and I think, I think, I think we should have the water run over there regardless. Just my two cents.
If I ask a question real quick, what is the size that you need to run across for all the properties over there?
Well...
The size difference?
I don't know that, I know that Tammy may know. I mean, for a minimum, it would be a two inch to supply even because it's a commercial and it's a...
Right.
Do you know if they look at that?
It's my understanding that there's, I'm sorry, thank you. It's my understanding that there's a water main that goes across Lumar that they could connect to in the front. They would have to run their one-inch service line across the front of their property to connect to the Lumar. They wouldn't have to connect to the backside on the South Church Street side.
Okay.
On, on that over, or it's the...
For the homes.
Oh, for the homes, okay.
But those homes are already tapped into the existing, their plumbing is already existing into the same plumbing that we use for the well, right? So them having to run lines to the other side of Lumar when it's already there, and if it's coming across the street to tap in right there, they have no other plumbing requirements in the future. If, if the well runs dry, the aquifer runs dry, then they're already established and set up at that time.
That would be something we would look at internally because it does make sense that, again, if council decides that the town's going to do it, it would make sense to run something larger than what they would need, but that's something we'd have to talk about internally to figure out what that size is. Okay.
Mr. Brooks?
Bill.
Couple questions, I'll ask. Who owns the well?
It's owned by George, I mean, sorry, Philis and Bill Phelps.
Yeah, Philis and Bill Phelps.
And there, do you have some sort of perpetual agreement with them that they just...
Yeah, we pay them monthly for the well.
Can they, can they change their mind and shut you off? Can they change their mind and shut you off?
They- yeah, it's their well. So I mean, we have a- we have- we pay them monthly for the water based upon usage and what they basically feel is fair. As- in accordance to the other houses there as well.
Did y'all look at any possible ways of securing an easement from one of the nearby lots so that you could connect to the main on Lu- Lumar?
It wouldn't be able to go that way. We tried to get across- so originally, the plan was we could tap into the line that already came across for the animal hospital. And that was a plan for about 60 days. And then they said, no, you can't do that because they only brought a three-quarter inch across the line. So it wasn't big enough to tap off of that and run into, so.
Which would've made more sense because then we're literally running parallel down South Church Street, not having to cross South Church Street. Probably something more feasible for us as a small business to do.
It would've been super easy, yeah.
But just like what he said, they were only required for three-quarters, which is nothing we could tap into. So it sits on the other side of South Church Street in the grassy bank of the Jeffers property.
It's right- yeah, right in front of that new house on the other side of the driveway. That's where it sits on that corner.
And they are running there? They're going to run to the new house?
I'd assume so. I mean, speaking of running the new houses, I mean, I think as a town, we brought it across the street for residential. I just didn't know the difference in that and commercial. Like, the new house that just went next to mine on Main Street, that water was brought across the street for them. And they just paid for the meter.
There is a water meter and sewer cleanout on that house across the street so they would not need to tap the main for either one of those. And I will say that VDH, the Office of Drinking Water, shows that Redpoint Holdings LLC is the well owner with Tim Ryan being the point of contact. Thank you.
We don't own the well.
We don't.
We don't.
Yeah. We send- I mean, we send the paperwork in every month for the water to get tested. No one else does that, but we do that.
Tim's name is on that because he's the one who does the brewing, who sends in the water samples every month.
Yeah, we drop it off with the Health Department.
Other than my next thoughts that's kind of sharing to see if we're going to move forward with this might have been Steve or Valerie. You're asking for assistance.
Correct.
Like Valerie, I'm concerned about precedent. And fairness to other folks. But if you are considering or would consider assistance in the form of some sort of loan from the town, pay back over a series of years, that would be a lot more appealing to me, something that I would- that I would consider. I find it difficult to go back, as does Mr. Bowman and member on the- members of the Planning Commission. A lot has happened and you guys have really, you know, pushed sand uphill, no question. But you went in with your eyes open. You know, you're committed to doing, you know, making that connection early. We hold other people responsible for making connections and meeting their obligations. My understanding from Planning Commission folks is that some of the things that they did grant you under special use permit were dependent upon you completing your original obligation. So I still have a problem with that. But if we want to talk assistance, you know, Michael said we don't really have a mechanism in place for that type of thing, so I'd like to hear other council on that. I'm not- if I were to vote right now, I would not vote to approve the $32,000 of taxpayer money to make that connection. But I'm certainly in support of small business. And if we could work out something that is amenable to all, that commits you folks to do what you said you would do early, I would certainly consider voting yes to that.
The only caveat I'll say is that we can't legally make a direct loan to them. We could have the work done and then set up a reimbursement over time kind of thing. But just, I had to put that out there, we can't legally, as a governmental entity, make a direct loan.
Terminology.
Right.
Well, that's pretty much what we deal with SRA.
Yes.
Mary Ellen?
Go ahead, yeah.
I'm like Valerie, we probably should've gone into this a little better at first instead of coming back to the plate with it again. My concern is that in preparedness of whatever goes across that street, we need to be obligated for a line that's big enough to grant those houses in the future if that well does fail. And I feel like that would be our responsibility to pay for that bigger-sized line. Because then we'd be prepared if something happened to the well and all those people didn't have water, the first thing out of their mouths would be, why don't we have- why don't y'all bring us some water? So at least we'd have it available to them. How we get it there to their houses, that's for public works to decide and so forth, so.
Mike, can I interrupt us for a second just to point of clarity? Those other houses already have the option to connect into the main on Lumar, is that correct?
I think that's viable, they would just have to have an easement to get there.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's several things that have to be done to make that happen if that well were to go dry or lightning struck it and the pump went bad. So at least having city water would be, you know, save them from not having to be inconvenienced for some period of time. So I just wanted to throw that out, that's another thing we need to think about. And I think the town is willing to look at that and not push that expense on them if we decide to go with a bigger connection. That's all, Ms. Duvall.
Okay, so where do we go from here, Michael?
Again, I mean, to- the June council meeting will be the first time council could vote on any option. So at that meeting, we can have this as an old business item if council so directs. And then it would just be up to council members to make a motion one way or the other on, you know, doing something with them. And ultimately, you know, there doesn't have to be any motion to do anything. It's only if council decides that it wants to do something to assist them in whatever manner that may be, that's 100% up to the seven of you as to what you feel inclined to do, to either help them with this request or not.
Can- could we get the people from Utilities, Public and Water, Ed, whoever, you know, whoever would be the person to talk to us, come and explain how all this would get laid out? Mike's talking about the separate line or the bigger line, you know? If we're going to- if we're going to do this, we need to look, be forward-thinking.
We would run probably at least a four-inch line to be able to supply the other homes if we were going to do that. So again, you guys just have to decide what level of financial support you want to provide to them or don't want to provide to them. Then we'll go move forward and put a line across the road.
Because I think if the- if the concern is, we're concerned about the well, we're concerned about the aquifer, we're concerned about the quality of the water, well, then the town should pay for that. It's not- has nothing to do with Redpoint, has to do with the whole- that whole section.
So just to clarify, there's an eight-inch main running down Lumar that those houses could already connect to. This connection for Redpoint would not be for those houses. The main has already been installed through Lumar for their connection.
On the other side of the street, not their side of the street. They still have to go under that road. It's on the other side of the street.
So what are we talking about, the main, the line that-
It goes over Moonfield, it crosses the street there and goes on the other side of Lumar.
So they have to thump under the road.
Same thing we got to do on the South Church Street, which we're already piped. So they came in with the water across there. It's already piped to that point, the end of Redpoint parking lot, it would fill all those houses. They just have to meter it to each one. It goes to everyone.
So this only does affect Redpoint? Or you're talking about the other people on the well, though? I'm not sure why. I mean, then that doesn't matter, the people on the well or not?
That is correct. This connection under South Church Street would service Redpoint Tap House. The main on Lumar would be the connection point for the houses that are on the well.
Okay, so we don't have to do this four-inch line or whatever, then?
No, again, we don't have to. This would be just an option. If the utility department felt like this would be the best way to service those in the future if they ever needed it, then we would do it. Or they could tap into that line on Lumar. But again, we would- we would look at that if we were to do this work and make that decision internally in the utility department.
So just to clarify that, so the eight-inch that's on Lumar is across the street on Lumar. The houses there on this well would still have to thump under that, gain easement through the other properties and then run the plumbing all the way through and the piping. Whereas coming, thumping under South Church Street, tapping into the existing main line that comes off the well, the piping is already there, there's no easements, there's no- there's no further running of plumbing because it's already established at that point. It'd be no different in tapping in across Lumar or tapping in against South Church Street.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one other question? To Mike.
Go ahead, yes.
Let's say hypothetically that there was no business there on this lot. And this lot was capable of having a business built upon it. We're talking about today, a building zoning permit is issued for a business on this lot. And realizing, okay, there's a well there. Whatever, anyway, long story short, would the town then be obligated to provide water service to that newly established business?
Not under normal conditions, no, sir.
My other question, Michael, what prompted the water service to Tap House? It's the type of business that it is. Because there have been businesses there before that were on the well. But because it- they had a rezoning and the fact that it's a restaurant.
Right, well, because it was a rezoning, we then evaluated everything that they needed to be in compliance with. And this was one part of our ordinance that-
But if they had opened a similar business to what had been there, they wouldn't have needed to tap, without a rezoning, they would-
If they had not gone through the rezoning process, then it probably would not have worked.
Okay.
Mary Ellen?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking for your opinion on this. I mean, it's been- sorry about that. Looking for your opinion on this. It's been thrown out, you know, hey, what if the town does the work and then pays back over several years? How do you feel about that? I mean, is that going to muddy up a business plan? Is that-
I mean, it wouldn't, I just see, we've- me and Michael have talked about this. The issue is, if I'm going to go- if I'm going to go finance something, I'm going to get the best price to get it financed. Where your contractor does all your work is going to want X amount of dollars. I get a contractor to do it cheaper than that, then I'm locked into the town because he only does the town work. Does that make sense? Then I'm going to get locked in for a higher amount of money. Where, again, you know, Mr. Bowman said he's concerned about the well and all the other houses that drink that water as well. Well, let's bring it across the street and let's all connect. And we don't want to ever have to have this conversation again.
Okay, so let's take that philosophy. So the town can get it done for $32,000, let's just say. And you said you could probably get it done for less. How much less? I mean-
I mean, well, that depends on the size of the line. Yeah, I could bring a three-quarter inch across the street for half of that price because that's all we need.
But you can't.
But you can't, it's got to be a two-inch sleeved because it's going out of the highway, yes, so there's-
You have to thump larger because you have to have a casing to go over the two-inch line as well. That's where it starts to get expensive, whereas the vet that's behind us has the three, I'm not sure what it is.
I'm like three-quarters.
It's a small enough line where we can't tap into it. So, and then their casing is whatever their size is bringing, so that was part of the problems, why it couldn't do that. But size of line, size of cost.
Right. You may have thought about this, I don't know. If you were going to do it on your own and finance it, how many years were you thinking about doing?
I mean, we really thought we'd have enough, you know, profit by now. But honestly, the bridge closure was not even on the radar and that was a complete smack. Like, that slash, I mean, you guys can see by the amount of taxes that we pay you now is a lot less than we were when it was open, I can promise you that.
And also, and also, not trying to go back way back when again, but part of the reason why we chose this property was the proposed bike path that was supposed to come down. The thought that we had with the previous town manager was bike path comes through, we hook up the town water, push it off, waiver two years. Two years came and gone, we waived it again for a period of time thinking the bike path is coming. Because in our mind, as small business owners, it does no good to tear up a parking lot. Put a water line in, tear up a parking lot again for a bike path, and then have to redo it all again. So the whole perpetuation of that was due to the future thought of business revenue for this bike path coming down South Church Street that has not happened in the ongoing six years.
And then with the bike path as well. So as you know, as Mike said, it's going to come right in front of us, which is going to require- So our lot is a pie, the longest part of our property is the front, where the town is going to have to say, hey, we need 10 foot of your property. We could probably work something out here that you get that 10 feet, we get the water across the street. It could be a give-give here.
But think of all those biking customers.
We take a lot of biking customers to make that up, correct?
That's a great halfway point, we'll just stop here and-
No, that was the point, originally it was called the poor peddler before we went to Redpoint, for the bike path, but, yeah.
All right, any other questions? So what do we do next, Michael? Move this to the June meeting?
Again, we can put it on the June council meeting under Old Business and then it's just a matter of you guys deciding what you want to do.
We make a motion then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And if there's any more questions or information you need between now and then, we can gather that for you and get you whatever it is you need to be able to make a decision one way or the other.
I think we should advance it to Old Business and take care of the matter. We owe it to them.
Right.
We owe it to the staff and I think we owe it to ourselves.
We just need to wrap up the situation, we've been talking about it forever.
Shake and bake.
Shake and bake.
Michael, explain to me if the- since we can't use the word loan, what would be the process to provide for us to cover the cost and recoup it from-
We would- we would have the attorney draft up an LOA or something of that nature, some sort of formal agreement that would spell out the terms of that and how they would repay us over time.
And can something like that be done interest-free?
In theory, yes, sir. I mean, again, that's completely up to you guys, so yes.
And I mean, it seems like the town should pay part of it. I don't think that Redpoint should pay all of it either. So we have some responsibility. If we're requiring them to do this, then we have a responsibility to pay for that as well.
I don't disagree with that at all.
I do disagree with it.
We bring it across to residential, but we don't do it for commercial.
And if I may on that, this building is from 1929. It's been residential office until we decided to do the business that we wanted to do with it. So it's been- it's been 101 businesses in 101 years. We're the longest-standing business on this property. As small business owners who have kids and give back to the town in many different ways, in many different aspects, you know, we're not trying to break the piggy bank on both sides to get this done. And we're not a big business that has franchises. Truly asking for some help here, I mean.
Yeah, I think it behooves the town to, this is a small business, that makes money for the town. So we are going to recoup our costs the more successful they are. And the sooner they are, you know, the sooner they are. And the bridge is going to help, the bridge is going to help all of us.
Mary Ellen, I don't disagree with what you're saying. And I'm a supporter of small businesses too. It's much more about the commitment. I do have some concerns that we're going about this backwards. I also have some concerns is that when they knew they had to hook up the town water when they were doing their due diligence, prices should have been checked then. And maybe they would have made a decision, maybe this is not the spot for us. I don't know of another situation in which we've paid using taxpayers' money to hook up water lines. And what prompted this was the rezoning. Had they put another business there? They say that this business has been open since 1929. I know the town is grateful to that. I know the town is grateful to that, but they made a decision to put a different business there, and when they did, then the rezoning came up.
Well, and I think we can have some flexibility too. We, we want to encourage business growth, business development, and it's not always going to be a gas station, or a hair salon, or a dog grooming place. That doesn't really make that much money for the town. But a restaurant and a tap house does. So I see this, I see this as an investment. I don't think it is precedent because this is an unusual situation. It's, it's, it's not new, it's not a new build, which would be a completely different situation, so...
But it's a new business.
Well, we have new businesses all the time, but they're not on a well. So this is the only business that we have that's on a well.
And so that's why this situation has come up, to say you need to connect to town water.
But I think that we have some, it's not their fault that it's on the other side of the street. I mean, I, I just think we can have some flexibility to support the small businesses.
And the bridge closure was not also in this plan either. And that's part of the reason why it's been perpetuated longer than it has is because of the economical impact that it, that the bridge closure has had on us. I mean, like I said, our numbers for the first two years don't compare to the past two years almost with the bridge closure. And if we had numbers that we had for the first two, three years prior to the bridge closure, we probably wouldn't be sitting here, but we ought to, because we're asking for help.
Tammy, I know you've got something to say, don't you? Well, you wouldn't come back up here.
I, I just wanted to clarify that we do require residential to tap the main as well. A part of our right-of-way permit is they need a Class A contractor's license in order to do work in our right-of-way. And I also want to let you know that just last week I did receive an inquiry about a new commercial business that would, that I informed them they would have to connect, and we estimate that water connection being around three hundred thousand dollars for it.
I mean, that's a bigger commercial property though, too.
It is, it is not, but it would have to bore under Ben's Church Boulevard, and so that's what would be so costly for them.
That's what I'm saying, it's a new business, it's not an existing building.
Big difference in new construction and something that's been there since nineteen twenty-nine.
Yeah, big difference between new construction and existing building.
Is that for the Wawa?
No.
Okay.
All right, I guess we're, that wraps...
I'm not done with you.
Go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Assistance and flexibility, can you be a little bit more specific? What would you endorse or propose? And I would like, I would like to hear you fellows react. You know, we, a couple of us have thrown out flexibility and loans and things like that, and you've made no positive response to any of those suggestions.
So, so definitely hear the suggestion as well. Obviously, our first request is for the assistance of bringing it over to the, to our side of the street because we still have financial responsibility for tapping, for metering, and for tapping into our existing plumbing through the hundred-year-old parking lot of South Church Street, which is not going to be an easy task. So we still have financial responsibility on this. That, that's our first request. If, if, if you're asking for us to comment on flexibility in, in MOAs and repayment plans and things of that nature, once again, Nick has already stated that, you know, your contractor that you have is higher than what we've gotten a quote at from somebody else. So why is it fair to us, if we have to go down this pathway, to repay you on your contractor's price instead of a contractor's price that we might be able to secure at a lower rate? So that, that's another point in that whole repayment plan thing. And the MOA is, is, are we flexible on that as well?
I think Tammy made the comment a little while ago that it requires a Class A contractor. Well, I don't think that there's just one Class A contractor out there. And if we set the specifications as far as what we want, I...
The only issue is, is since we have a contract in place that is very specific that we will use them for this work in town, I don't know that we can go outside of that contract for this type of work in town. Now, it wouldn't preclude them from hiring somebody else if they wanted to. But we do have a, a contract with one contractor to do utility work in the town.
I understand that, but hypothetically, could the town, if they, if they went out, if, if... And I, I understand where you're coming from, because it, I know how it can upset the apple cart for sure if, if we go and do something different. But at the same time, if they were to locate a Class A contractor and we set the specifications, same specifications that our current contractor would use, other than upsetting the apple cart, is that a possibility?
We have to, I have to look at the terms of our existing contract to see if we can go outside of it to select another utility worker.
Because, you know, obviously, they're not, they're not going to want that to occur.
No, I mean, like I said, I just, because generally when we bid these, they're exclusive contracts, and if we, I, I don't know that I can go outside of that contract to, for us to hire somebody to do utility work in town.
When's the last time that we asked them what it was going to cost to go across the road?
Within the last month.
Well, I still think we ought to advance it to Old Business, and I think we ought to come to a conclusion at the next meeting.
But I think we also need to have more information before we vote on it.
Like what?
What would you like?
Well, work out, I mean, work out whatever the deal is going to be in term, in terms of who pays for what, who gets what, who...
That, I don't have any, you guys have to decide on a deal before I can work out any of that.
All right.
That, that's, you guys have to give me direction on where you want to go before I can do that. Because otherwise, that's me negotiating a deal that you guys didn't approve.
Thank you.
But if we, we were to work with the numbers you've given us today, this is next June, Tuesday, somebody would, okay, we'll pay the thirty-two thousand dollars. That's the number, and it was like three weeks ago you got that number. So that's what you're telling us, work within that number, say, okay, we're willing to assist with this amount, half of that amount, have them half back, yes, no, all of it.
Right.
That's what you want to say.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, so that's what we, so as long as we have a dollar amount, however we decide to divvy it up, or...
Right, the, the price that we were given since the last council meeting, whenever I started looking at it again, it was just under thirty-two thousand, like thirty-one-six or somewhere in that ballpark. So that's the number that we have to bring it under the road and set the meter.
And that's not connecting down to our...
That's not connected.
Bring it across the street though.
That's right, that's just bringing it across and setting the meter.
So the only variable that you're talking about, if you've got a known number as far as what it's going to cost, the variable is going to be if they chose to go down that pathway, because I can read the deed leaves around here pretty well, is that how long of a period of time are you going to offer them in order to pay that amount back? That's probably, if I was a betting man, what we will be contending with, should we decide to go down that path.
And ultimately, if council, at the June council meeting votes to make some offer, you know, until we put ink on paper, there's no obligation over here to accept that. If there's something else that is better, more advantageous for you, then, you know, but that's...
And they probably need to come back or come to us in the interim or send something in, after consideration, something in writing that says, hey, you know, look, this is what we're up for, or this is not what we're up for. I mean, that's, it's a business decision, and it's in their hands. So, you know, they're asking for help. We're trying to be good fiduciaries as far as the taxpayers are concerned and the fairness perspective, like Valerie indicated and things like that. You know, we would love to place, we would love to be Santa Falls. I know that. I, I mean, we've, we've, I think at times we've demonstrated that. But at the same time, we do have an obligation to the taxpayers that are similarly situated to treat them in a similar manner. I think I, I used kind of that same comment, the, the last motion that we had. But at the same time, we want to work with you. We, I, I sense that all around, but it's... Yeah, I see. Thank you.
All right, I guess, I'm sorry?
Old Business, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. So this concludes Water and Sewer.
Thank you, Ms. Bevron, thank you all for coming up.
Thank you for your time.
At this time, we have finance. Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir. At this time, I'd like to open the Finance Committee, Town Council, and along with members of Councilman Harrison, Councilwoman Butler. I'm going to turn it over to our treasurer, Laura Ross.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have included a couple new graphs in with your package. There are seven different types of revenue, and I've just focused on the largest ones that we have. That would be real property taxes and local taxes. And the, it will change since the real estate bills went out. You probably all received yours?
Yeah.
Yeah. So those will be collected by the June the fifth. But currently, the largest proportion of our revenue with regards to real property taxes are, of course, personal property taxes. If we step down to the local taxes part, the meals taxes are the largest one, and the combined meals tax is actually six point two-five percent for a total of one point eight million dollars. Step down to business licenses, and those were due in the middle of April, and we have so far collected ninety percent of what is due. As I mentioned, the real estate bills did go out. They were mailed on May the eighth. There were two point three million dollars that were billed, and we're starting to collect those already, as you go along. I'll talk quickly about the total revenue connected and collected to date. And if you look at page, page one, it will show, excuse me, not page one, page two, it shows ten million dollars. And the actual calculation for that would be we're at ninety point two percent of what was budgeted. It throws it off a little bit because of the number in there that is from the, it says governmental and federal, and that's the ARPA money. So it throws it off just a little bit, but it doesn't actually impact what's totally collected. So if we go down to, look at the total disbursements or total expenses to date, that's eight point seven, and that's seventy-three point sixty-seven percent of what is actually budgeted for the year, which is where we expect to be. The debt breakdown is in your sheet as you, in your packet, so you have that. And we can talk about quickly what it takes to prepare the real estate bills. And those take about a good week of extracting data, going through all the data, comparing the data, running through every single number, so that's a, it's a huge process. And I'll talk about the new, the financial system that will help us with that later on. But it's a huge laborious process to go through. That's all for that, if you want to talk about cash balances, unless anybody has any questions?
Good job on the, on the graph.
Thank you, I'm going to do some more.
I like that, boy, it's kind of more surprising when you see it on a graph.
I tried to do the pie chart, but it ends up being little tiny pieces, can't, can't read it. But I'll include some other things too. I want to include the expenditures or expenses on one of them, but it was just hard to get all that together. Figure out how to make it work, it wasn't just too much information.
No, while the kudos is going, thanks for getting the tax bills out, although no one likes to see that in that mailbox, but thank you for getting my time.
You're welcome. We finally did, and I was hammering the folks that do the printing, like, is it going out today? And I would mail them four or five times during the day to see where they were, just passing them a lot. As you see at the bottom of the bank balances, it's eighteen million, six hundred and four thousand. I included another sheet in there, like I did last time, that shows with regards to our investments that we are in compliance with our policies. And we have twenty-two point two million dollars invested, and we are in all compliance with that. I've also included a new little chart that I'm going to go back and include it for years back, but it's, it takes a while to pull all the data together. So I show what our returns were for fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, to give an overall rate of how things are with regards to what we've been earning for the past few years. Any questions on that? Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? No?
All right.
Well, that's it until Michael's going to talk.
All right, so next we have the pre-public hearing discussion. Is that you, Michael?
Yes, sir. This is just another opportunity, if there's any questions, comments, anything that council wanted to discuss, we do have the budget public hearing scheduled for tonight at six-thirty. But it's just another opportunity, if there were questions, for me to be able to answer those ahead of tonight.
I have received no questions or comments from anybody. Counselor, no?
I've got a couple of questions, Michael. And, and I had a conversation with Chief Howell. The police department are requesting additional cameras.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they Flock cameras, or are they, they are Flock cameras?
Yes, ma'am.
My question was, the ones that we currently have, have they been effective and have we been solving crime using them?
Yes, by all means. We've solved several crimes just because of the Flock cameras. And, and just as the chief's sitting down, just so folks know, we don't sit and monitor those cameras. The only time that they are ever, you know, we view them as if there's an active investigation and we're looking to try to find a suspect car. There is a database of stolen license plates, or other localities may have flagged a license plate because of a crime. We get hits for those. So it's not like we're, you know, monitoring where, you know, John Doe was driving today. That just doesn't happen. It is used for investigative purposes only.
Are Flock cameras as popular, popular with other jurisdictions?
Yes, yes, sir.
If anything, we're late to the game.
Okay, okay. And then my other question, how are we paying for the maintenance building out at Luda Sportsplex?
It is in the, proposed to be paid with reserves.
Okay.
I, I would like for the chief to speak about the Flock, you know, importance. I've been watching this for some time with other cities and stuff, and I know that, I asked him a question the other day about a chase they had through Smithfield, and of course, he got away, but they were able to find him later on. Isn't that correct, chief?
Yes, sir. One of the last, well, actually, it was a pursuit by another law enforcement agency, and within twenty minutes after they terminated the pursuit, they were able to go back and look at the Flock camera and was able to identify the owner of them, or the motorcycle and charges were immediately obtained. In reference to Flock, Flock is throughout the Hampton Roads area. All law enforcement agencies that I'm aware of are now using Flock. It don't just benefit the citizens here, but I can tell you all of our major investigations, Flock has been a pivotal tool that we have used that have, we've had huge success with.
Okay.
The chief said it's being used through Hampton Roads, but I'd like to expand on that. Daily, we're getting requests and getting offered video links from departments all over the country, anywhere from California all the way to Virginia. They're constantly asking to have access to our cameras and giving us access to their cameras.
I don't know if I like that, where criminals are coming through our town.
No, we like to catch them both.
And at that point, if we have an issue here and we have a license plate that we put in the system, if that license plate pings in Delaware, we're going to hear about it.
Okay.
So it's been extremely successful to help solve that.
I want to follow up on Valerie's question about the, the Luda Sports shed.
Yes, sir.
I know there's a better word for it somewhere. How much of that building has to be faced with brick?
Right now, the way that the ECO guidelines are, all of it does. Now, one thing we'll do is, we've had some design done, and that's going to go further. I've already instructed the engineering team to start putting together what the bid package would be. And if we get to a point and it looks like there may be substantial cost savings to, because two sides of the building won't be seen at all.
Right.
So we may come and... So we may come and ask for a special use permit to only do two sides. Because one side will face, you know, 258, and one side will face the entrance of the ball fields. So we may get to a point, we'll figure out what that dollar amount is, what the engineer's estimate will be. And so we may come back, face off those costs, and ask to only do two sides instead of four.
That was sort of where I was going. We can ask ourselves for an SUP.
Right. We can apply for one.
Right.
And I also want to mention, that price includes additional parking, which is much needed out there on game days, and lay-down yards for all of our material that we use on the fields.
And what, I'm sorry, Amy, I didn't understand what kind of materials?
Lay-down yard for the materials we use on the fields, like the filled dirt and gravel and things like that.
Oh, okay.
So it's not just the building.
Right. But you know, most of us across the board are pretty much behind that. But I think I've gotten eight or nine emails or texts, all wondering why the cost is so high. So anything that we can do to look at that and reduce that cost, particularly in the bricking, seems to be a no-brainer.
Yes, sir. And we'll look at that as we get further down the design. But as Amy mentioned, it's the building, the parking lot, as well as the material storage.
Where will the additional parking be?
It will be at the front where the Womble House previously was.
Okay.
So the, the building will be back a good distance from the road, and also have significant landscaping all through the parking lot and in front of the building itself. So that's something else to note about the exterior.
Michael, this plan we have currently, is it, is that the landscape too? Okay.
Yes, sir. Because it's in the ECO, it'll have to do all of them.
Okay. And that's a big expense at times.
Right. And something we need to make, do a better job of framing that for the public. Everybody right now thinks, you know, we're going to build a shed for $2 million because in the public statement, we're not referencing the landscaping and the lay-down road and all that other stuff.
Absolutely. Yep. Anything we can do to get that word out would be helpful.
Right. And let me ask you publicly, since I did get a, I think it was a text that asked why we would not put the building all the way back adjacent to the deepest parking lot near the Big Field.
Because the utilities don't run that direction, so that would be an additional cost that would probably total up where we're trying to build it.
And the power lines that run through there are not ours.
Yeah, that's an easement for Dominion Power, so that's not ours to build under.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions about the pre-public hearing?
Just one. I didn't, I didn't see, and I may have missed it. I have been, since I got here, how should I say it? Concerned about the public address systems that we have here. It makes no sense to me, while we've got a microphone right there that has to be moved and moved and moved and moved and different things like that. It's a wonderful facility. And I, you know, think that, well, we can.
We do have money in.
I missed it, Doug.
You do?
How much you have in there?
We have more mics, sir. We could put more mics out if you don't mind.
We did add some money to.
All right.
We have more mics in stock today. We could put more mics out right now.
Then why aren't they?
We figured there's always maybe just one speaker in the middle. And when I had more mics out there, we didn't need them, so.
Well, I would much rather have more and not need them than have just one and have to move it back and forth.
Yes, sir.
That work, that you don't have to put batteries in every time. I just, you know, I, I think it's, it's probably just me, and it probably is. I just, do we finish? I just strongly believe that the setup demonstrates to the public professionalism. It's just, I guess, my dad's military in me or something. I don't know what it is. But I just think that we, as a, as a public, as body politic, we should look the way that we are supposed to. That's just, you know, and I've had numerous complaints, I'm on it, about, as you were so kind to remind us today, Mr. Vice Mayor, move up to the microphone. Put the microphone in front of you. Well, they make microphones that I've never had to move up in front of. They picked up, that's the way it is. So that's just my two cents. I, I don't know how long this stuff has been here. It does get older. It does wear out. I don't, I'm not one of those ones who likes to spend tax dollars just for the sake of it. But I think our citizenry likes to hear and likes to see what's going on here. And there have been times that I've gotten phone calls that, or, or just can't hear you. So that's it. I'm done. Thank you.
Some of it is having to take up and put down every time. Not having a permanent town council facility does hamper us some. But we can make sure we have additional microphones out. So if and when we ever get to build a facility with a permanent, we will.
We'll have our own chambers.
It will be much better. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
All right. The last item on the Finance Committee agenda is a new one for me. So I'm curious to hear about the financial system selection update. Laura Ross, you're back up. Please move the microphone.
I'll move this microphone. I can stand up and talk, sing into it.
I'm pointing exactly.
So about six months ago, I'm going to go back and tell a little bit of history for those of you that didn't get to listen to my speech about Munis. About six months ago, I started talking about the fact that we were just going to quit using, quit trying to implement the parts that they had because they just didn't work. My staff had to sit through training sessions, they called them. They weren't really training sessions. They were implementation sessions. And Munis charges $165 an hour, and they would want to sign up for it. They would want us to, to do this for four hours or eight hours. I can't have my staff sit there for eight hours training on something. So I said, that's it. We're not going to do this anymore. And currently, we're using an older platform, if anybody wants to come out and see it or are familiar with what a black screen with green letters or green lighting on it looks like. That's what we use right now. But it works. It works really well for what we need it for. But it's time for us to start moving on to something else that's a little bit easier. So we have to use BAI for all the revenue section, and then you use this Munis product for anything else that we use, all the financial statements. So these financial statements that you have, that you get every month, those are in Excel. And what that takes to put that together, we have someone go and do a program and pull all the data out of BAI, manipulate it. And then we are able, then we have to pull the information out of Munis because Munis does not have a financial reporting package that we've been able to get to work. We can pull ones called trial balance, but we have to pull the trial balance. We can't just pull a financial statement that would be like, what's your budget look like? Or we don't, we haven't implemented that portion either. What would be your revenue? Let's just take a look at that. So it's really, really complicated. So we get a file, and the whole process, I don't even know what the file looks like that comes across. I think it's just Comma Delimited or that. And then it's uploading. It's not something that we can do. It's something that we have to have a programmer do. So there's a cost associated with that. So it'd be great to have one financial package. So I had Michael involved, my staff involved, because if everybody's going to use it, it's really important that they take a look at it and see if they can use it day to day because it's the front-end staff that really are the ones that are going to have to work with this product. So we looked at, actually, we looked at three of them or several of them, and determined which one really, really fit our needs. And they all run about the same. If you look at over a five-year period, they do run about the same. One is cheaper per month, but has a higher implementation fee, and we can get it implemented quicker. The other one has a higher per-month rate and a lower implementation fee. What I'd like to do, once we decide that this is okay to go forward, is implement general ledger first because that's sort of the driving force behind everything that we do. And then implement the other packages after that. We really don't want to do anything with payroll until January. Of course, that means that we'd have to do a lot of stuff upfront because people really don't like getting two W2s. It's so much better to just get one. It's all kind of combined together. There are several modules that we really do need to include in all of that. And it goes into even as low as asset tracking and asset costing, which right now, we do on a spreadsheet. And we looked at two different platforms that we really took under consideration. One is called Edmunds, and the other one is RDA. And the folks, I even had them vote on it. And we really do feel more comfortable with going with RDA. Now, it does have a higher implementation fee. The first year, it costs just a little bit more, but over a five-year period is about $20,000 less. But they do a better implementation. They do a better hands-on implementation. Edmunds, I just didn't get a feel that their implementation would work quite as well. RDA is a little bit smaller, and the consultant that we have used for many, for a while has worked with them and gave a favorable result with that. And I've talked to some of their folks that use it, other people that use it, other localities that use it, and they're very pleased with that. And I put some information in front of you. And for those of you that weren't here to hear about how long we've been using Munis, we've been implementing it since September 1st, 2015.
And I'll add on to this, too. For those of you that have been around a while, you know, it seems like we've been doing, implementing Munis forever, and it's because we have. And we have gotten to a point where it just looked like there was no end in sight. We were not making progress. We were not getting anywhere. Accounts payable and permitting are the only two things that are actually functional. Every time we would make a step forward, the implementation person would change, and we'd go back to square one because, oh, something wasn't right. So we made the decision to halt all implementation because we were spending money on stuff that we just weren't getting anywhere. And everybody was frustrated enough. I told orderers, staff, go see what options are out there and see what you think will work the best. And so that's what they did, and they've come back with the recommendation that we cut bait with Munis and move to RDA. So we would have, we would start another implementation process and would move away from the Munis platform. And if you remember, the reason we went to it, and the town of Windsor went to it at the same time to try to be on the same platform that county was using. A lot of what was sold to us at that time has, even in Windsor, still hasn't come to fruition to this day. They did get, we did get it all up and running, but some of the seamless stuff still wasn't what they told us it was going to be. Part of that was the county is locally hosted, so they have servers out at the courthouse that runs all of their financial software. Well, right after the decision was made, Munis decided they were no longer supporting locally hosted, and it was all cloud-based. And the two systems didn't really talk to each other. So that's what led to a lot of the issues. But here, no matter what we do, payroll is a great example. Tracy and Ashley have gone through at least three different implementation people and have started over every time that something wasn't right. And to date, have never run a payroll that worked. So we stopped. So, I mean, I hate to, to look at the amount of money we have spent trying to implement Munis at this point in time, but none of us feel confident that we'll ever get to the finish line. And as Laura mentioned, the software that we're running now, BAI or Bright, is an old, like DOS Prompt looking, that's, and unless you know the secret squirrel codes, you can't, I mean, they had taught me how to take a water payment in Windsor, but if I left that screen, I could not go anywhere else. And you do, you have to have somebody specialized in that software to pull data out of it. And unfortunately, the gentleman we have now, I mean, he was doing it when I was in Windsor, and there just aren't people that are doing it with this software anymore.
And he is 83 and still works for us. So, I mean, wonderful guy, and he knows how to use it really well. But he should probably want to retire one day. Yes.
So ultimately, what we're, what we're looking at is, we're recommending that we work with RDA, we'll get a proposal, official proposal and contract from them to provide our financial software. It would include all of the payroll. It would include accounts payable, everything. But, but that's where we are at this point in time. We just don't see an end in sight with Munis.
How long are we obligated to munish?
Well, we are at a point where we can get out.
All we have to do is give them, I think it's 90 days.
Right.
But it would take a while to unwind everything because you'd have to redo the whole.
No, and, and they know because we've been very upfront with them with our frustrations. And we have been very upfront that we, we told them we were stopping all implementation and looking for other options. So they know.
Laura, you've talked to other, it says there are other localities in Virginia that use it. You've talked to the staff, and, I mean, it's one thing to get the sales pitch, but you've talked to people actually using it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that was the one thing. How easy is it, the biggest question my folks have, or how easy is it to, if you have a problem, how is it resolved? That was one of the one questions that we asked them. Because with Munis, if you have a problem, you go to a, you know, when your Apple phone doesn't work, you go out and you Google it, and they have this whole help section that, that's not what they do. So that makes a lot. That's what Munis does, but that's not what these other guys do.
It's, it's been so, to the point. You said 2015?
Yep, yep.
Seems to me like it may have been longer. I became chief here 2012. And Chief Howell and I would go to these meetings, and it would be the joke of the meeting. And after a while, it was not a joke anymore. It was obviously what we have come to here. And it, it has never, it has never worked correctly. It just, I mean, the modules, different things that, you know, HR is supposed to be, supposed to be able to do. It's just been, and then, as I think I heard you say, $168, what, an hour?
An hour.
So when they've got a screwed up situation that you've got to go get fixed, they're going to charge you $168 to fix their system. That, that doesn't sound like customer service to me. So, I mean, I just want to, you heard from them, that we would sit in department head meetings, and it was the talk of it almost every, every meeting we were there. And it became a bad word. It shouldn't have been a four-letter word instead of a, what is it, five or something? It's, it's really, it needs to be changed. And Marilyn, I'm glad you asked that question, because I was going to ask that, too, as far as the references are concerned. We certainly don't want to buy another pig and a poke that we dealt with for all this period of time. You know, it's almost like the microphones. We need professional stuff because we're professional people. That's where we don't be. But I just want to hammer home the fact that they're, they're not, I've been there and seen it. So it's, it's a mouse. But anyway, I'm glad we're moving away from it. Thank you.
Yes, we, we've been dealing with this for a long time, I know, so, because I've been on council for a while. I do know that when they, they were all excited about Munis, and they thought it was going to be the shining star. And, and, and I kept seeing the same patterns. And I remember we had, me and Renee Roundtree had a conference call with one of the representatives, and it was the same Roundtree, just, I mean, not Roundtree, but same old ball rolling down the court. Nothing getting done. And constant, constant, no, nothing being accomplished. This has been going on for a long time, and I'm glad you all have reached out and tried to correct this and move in a different direction.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
I know that, that's the nitty-gritty. A lot of people don't think about it, but in any business, and we'll call the town a business, that stuff is so, so important. And it is taxing to learn it. I mean, trial balances, general ledger, this accounting code, what's that? And it's all tied in. One thing could be wrong, and it sounds like a lot's wrong in Munis. It affects everything else. Anyway.
Well, and if it wastes your time, it wastes money, too, so.
And every year that our tax bills have been delayed, it has been because of the conversion. The Munis folks will say, all right, we're going to go live this year, so we will get up to the last minute, and then something wouldn't work, and we'd have to scramble and go back to the old system. And so that's what's caused the majority of our delays in tax bills. And this year, we knew we weren't going to Munis, so we did everything in Bright from the get-go. And they're out of time. So it's, this will save a lot of headaches.
Good work.
Thanks.
All right. Anything else for the Finance Committee? Questions? All right. Well, that concludes the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Now we have Public Buildings and Welfare. Mrs. Butler?
Yes, and my committee is made up of Vice Mayor Bill Harris and Darren's absence. And the only thing on the agenda is an update on the blighted property.
Yes, ma'am. And this is the item that I more recommend we go into closed session for this update as it may, as it relates to possible litigation.
Do we have a motion?
Can I ask something else?
Yes, ma'am.
Or come back to this?
Yes.
I, I called Steve the other day, only because I saw a lot of complaints on social media about the traffic in town. I called Steve the other day only because I saw a lot of complaints on social media about the traffic in town. And, well, my mom was a very example with all of this detours. She was confused. She drove down Gray Spring Road, and she shouldn't have drove, driven down there. But I also noticed that they've started putting barricades at the drainage going to the Westside Elementary. So, I'm assuming that they're gonna be starting that project soon.
Yes, ma'am. If you noticed in front of the Give Me Shelter, they have started now, that's part of that project. They are doing drainage work, and then the sidewalk will start there and start its way down towards the school.
Does VDOT ask us, is it, you know, is this a good time for the town? You know, why won't they start that project going to Westside after school closes? I mean, traffic already is a bear there, and this is gonna make it worse. And I think on Friday, VDOT was even doing something on the bypass as you cross over Main Street. And I'm assuming that something may be happening at the commuter parking lot because they've started removing the fences.
That is all part of this project.
Michael, and the bridge closed. I just think it's too much going on at one time. When does Gray Street start?
Sometime in '26.
Four years ago?
In '26, after.
Oh, that's, that's '26. I mean, God forbid a serious emergency would happen here. It's a lot going on in one little area for us.
It is, and unfortunately, it's the timing and the money and when it became available, and with VDOT's contract, and if you miss it, sometimes you run the risk of losing the money.
Have you had any complaints from citizens?
I have not. Not yet.
It's because you're sending them all down.
It's on social media.
Yes.
But I agree with it. I was in town on, I don't know if it was Thursday evening or Friday evening, and I was backed all the way up on Main Street to the traffic light.
It was. It is. And that period of time where they had Great Springs Road closed down, the detour, that, that made it worse. But luckily, that's gone now.
But I will tell you, that project looks really nice.
People don't, people don't realize, and sometimes you have to be reminded, that there are more people going down that two-lane highway through the town of Smithfield called the bypass that go down Route 460 every day.
Is it? But it looks like VDOT is working everywhere.
They are.
Everywhere.
Thank goodness. That's great.
That's because the Commonwealth's budget is in such position that they can. For many years, it wasn't, and they had to put stuff off. That's, that's, yeah, and to your point, we're really at a disadvantage because of all this work going on at one time. But if you look at it the other way, we're at an advantage if they're spending all that money, although it's an inconvenience, on our little community at one time. And it's hard to see that when you're backed up for three miles.
Oh, that's definitely. Well, they could work at midnight.
Because they charge so much more to do that.
And somebody would complain about the noise.
Well, that's true.
But if that's it.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, they need a motion now. Need a motion to go in the closed session.
Well, let's do this before logistically. We don't have any public here. Can we just stay in here and do the, do the closed session in here instead of moving to the other room?
If we shut everything down, I mean.
We gotta, he's gotta shut all this down.
Well, okay. All right, I make, I make a motion that we go into closed session that matters to be discussed, involves nothing but potential legal litigation.
And that's 22.23711A7.
Thank you.
Second, we have a second. All in favor? Say hi.
Need a call question in this one.
Yeah, we do.
Yes.
All right, let's call a question then.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bickamire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
All right.
Good luck with it. Thank you.
I know that that's the nitty-gritty. A lot of people don't think about it, but in any business, and we'll call the town a business, that stuff is so, so important, and it is taxing to learn it. I mean, trial balances, general ledger, this accounting code, what's that? And it's all tied in. One thing could be wrong, and it sounds like a lot's wrong in Munis. It affects everything else. Anyway.
Well, and if it wastes your time, it wastes money too, so.
And every year that our tax bills have been delayed, it has been because of the conversion. The Munis folks will say, "All right, we're gonna go live this year, so we will get up to the last minute," and then something wouldn't work, and we'd have to scramble and go back to the old system. And so, that's what's caused the majority of our delays in tax bills. And this year, we knew we weren't going to Munis, so we did everything in Bright from the get-go, and they're out of time. So, it's, this'll save a lot of headaches.
Good work. Anything else for the Finance Committee? Questions? All right, well, that concludes the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Now, we have Public Buildings and Welfare. Mrs. Butler.
Yes, and my committee is made up of Vice Mayor Bill Harris and Darren's absence. And the only thing on the agenda is an update on the blighted property.
Yes, ma'am, and this is the item that I'm gonna recommend we go into closed session for this update as it may, as it relates to possible litigation.
Do we have a motion?
Do we go back into open session?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we reconvene the Smithfield Town Council Committee meetings and certify that no discussion or no business was discussed, other than those that were previously stated that deal with pending legal action.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
And that's under 2.23712 is the code for certification.
Call for the question?
Councilwoman Bowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bickamire?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
All right.
At this time, I think we're still under, let's see where I'm at.
No.
The blighted property. Do we want to continue on that?
No, sir. Next update will be at the June council meeting.
Okay. Laura, does that conclude everything for you?
Unless someone else has something else that they'd like to discuss.
No? Then this concludes Public Buildings and Welfare.
Meeting adjourned.